In retrospect, I would have got more of an argument closer to our street.
My eyeballs, thank for my new ones to show up.
Now, Reed, tell me what it says.
Can you hear us, Dave? You can hear us?
Yes, I can.
Oh, we can't hear Dave.
Can't you hear me? Well.
Why would you have? Amazing, asterisk by Vegas. What's the deal with that?
All right, everybody, I got seven o'clock. I'm gonna call this regular city council meeting for September 12th, 2023 to order. Let's have Councilor White lead us in Pledge of Allegiance. Please and thank you. Everybody all stand.
For allegiance to the flag, the United States of America, in tender republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, liberty, and justice for all.
Thank you. One second. And we'll take roll call, please.
Councilor Ripma.
Here.
Councilor Caswell.
Excused.
Councilor Wan.
Here.
Councilor White.
Here.
Councilor Witrin.
Present.
Councilor Glantz.
Here.
Mayor Lauer.
Here.
Mr. Ray Young, do we have any agenda updates?
Yes, we do. Discussion number three with Senator Gorsuch and Representative Hudson should be bounced down one or two spots to four or five since Representative Hudson is now over in Wood Village and he should be arriving shortly, so I said we bump it down a little bit. So, and Senator Gorsuch's not here either, so we'll bump it down till they show up, I guess.
Okay, sounds good. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Two, Public Comment. Public comment on non-agenda and consent agenda items is welcome at this time. Public comment on agenda items will be taken at the time the item is considered. Public comments should be directed to the presiding officer and limited to matters of community interest or related to matters which may or could come before council. Each speaker shall be limited to five minutes for each agenda item unless a different amount of time is allowed by the presiding officer with consent of the council. The council and mayor should avoid immediate or protracted responses to citizen comments. Citizen comment, or public comments open. Let's go to Zoom first, and if anybody on Zoom wishes to make public comment, now is the time. Go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city of residence for the record. Oh. Not seeing anybody jump at the chance inside chambers. Yeah, go ahead. Go ahead and approach the table, have a seat, and then state your name and city of residence for the record and speak into that microphone right there.
Babette Bastian, Troutdale resident.
Welcome.
Thank you. Do I just tell you my concern?
Yep, absolutely.
So I live behind the old city hall where they're constructing the brewery, the pub. There's about, I don't know how many tons of bags of garbage right in front of our apartment complex that is just sitting there. I don't know if there's asbestos in there. Asbestos, or how you say asbestos?
Asbestos.
Or other hazardous chemicals that are just being blown with the frequent wind across our property. And I was, we were told by the construction workers that Troutdale shut them down. So I don't know if it's just shut down and they're not gonna remove that garbage. I don't know how long it's gonna be, but I'm concerned for our, our health. And then my second issue is the parking on First Fridays. And also that newly pub that will be coming into place, but our parking right now on First Fridays, if we leave during that time of First Friday, we have nowhere to park. And it can be blocks and blocks and I'm, I'm not okay to walk it. I mean, I feel like if I lived there, I should, that, that little area should be blocked off for us, just like you guys block off for the first responders.
Right.
Up on my top block. But that's, it's a big concern, especially when she had to park like five blocks away the other day.
Okay.
So those are my two concerns.
Okay, all right. Thank you. I appreciate it.
What was the location of the property?
He parked right in the parking lot across from my apartments. Behind the old city hall.
Oh, the property back there where the government piles are.
Yes, I mean, the, the piles were really bad.
Okay.
I got you. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next speaker, go ahead and approach the desk and same thing, state your name and city of residence for the record.
Hi, I'm, I'm Mary Bolinger Becker, Mary Becker. City of Residence, Troutdale Residence. And I'm just kinda going along with my neighbor Babette. And I'm disabled and this first Friday I had to wa, park my Jeep all the way up to the school with my disabled parking paths. And I had to walk it all the way home. And by the time I got home, it's like I just kinda crashed on the couch and I can't move for the next two days because I'm in excruciating pain. That's why we're begging to get the parking turned from the city over to tenant parking, please. On the east side, the Kibbling between Second Avenue and the driveway between where the new parking, where the new pub is going in at. Then you've got East Historical Columbia River Highway down here. We're not worried about that. We're just from the driveway to East Historic, well, to Second Street. And this has been going on and on and on, and we need something resolved, is what we're asking. We're not swearing off, we just are asking, can we please have it turned over to tenant parking owner, please?
Okay, all right. Thank you very much. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
Anybody else wishes to make public comment?
Good evening, Mayor, City Councillors. Name's Tanny Staffenson, Troutdale resident, and I also serve as a member of the Public Safety Services Delivery Working Group. And that is a new group that has been formed and wanted to talk to you briefly about ordinance 2578. That group has actually met once so far, and our second meeting is scheduled for the 27th. And the ordinance that you guys currently have sunsets that group on the 27th. And I would just like to make a suggestion as a member of that group, not officially, but maybe that we could sunset that further down the road so that group could do some more of its work. Those are two of probably the most important services that we have in the city, and they're very large budget items. And I think they would deserve more of that group's time, if possible.
Okay, all right.
Thank you.
Thank you, Tanny. Appreciate it. Not seeing anybody else. Let's go ahead and close public comment. Thank you, everybody. Let's go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Number Four. We have a public hearing, I'm sorry. Yep, Agenda Item Number Four, which is taking over Agenda Item Number Three, Public Hearing in Ordinance First Introduced on August 22nd. In Ordinance Prohibiting Camping on Public Property in accordance with state and federal law. Mr. Ray Young.
Thank you, Mayor. As you recall from the discussions two weeks ago, staff was asked to make several corrections in the, corrections additions, changes in the ordinance. And you have provided in your packet a attachment to the staff report where I highlighted the changes. On the third page, Section 829.050, the time, place, and manner restrictions, that's where most of the changes were instituted. Under time, as requested, the time was changed to 10:00 PM to 6:00 AM where camping could occur, and then after 6:00 AM, they had to dismantle the campsite. We added in C, just generally city property. It was kinda like reading, it's like, eh, we might as well add city property, just make very clear that's what it applies to. Then in C is where all the place regulations were added as requested by council. Number six was added, within 250 feet of any city utility facility, including, limited to a wellhead, pump station, reservoir, or water pollution control facility. Number seven was added, within 250 feet of the high watermark of the Columbia River, Sandy River, and Beaver Creek. And number eight was wording that I created, well, first of all, as I was looking at the map trying to figure out, you know, the other sensitive areas in the community, I realized that nobody made a mention of cemeteries. We have a large cemetery right off of Troutdale Road. So I added, within 250 feet of a cemetery or other class of Metro designated Title 13 Habitat Conservation Area, commonly known as VECO. And looking at the Metro's VECO map, they designate VECO as any forested area, just like Helen Aldous Park next door. That's all, you know, VECO area. So it pretty much covered every other sensitive area in the city, similar to what the city of Portland did for their biologically sensitive areas. So I felt that adding that one pretty much covered every sensitive area we have in the city that would be a reasonable place not to allow any camping. Then, when you get down to the end, under penalties, we changed the, based on Mr. Wilcox's suggestion, we changed the verbiage under C where we added the city manager comma, gender neutral, their designee, or a peace officer, and then down below, it was added, fair to comply with punishable by fine of more than $1,000 or 30 days in jail. And then, Mayor, somebody, if it continues to be acceptable, you were providing another change to the end there that Mr. Wilcox pointed out was, and we left off an and and a comma in 829070 C, so when it's a, if it's voted on approved, it should be as provided tonight to council with those two corrections at the end. I think, yeah, you, you do have two copies. One of them with the yellow on top shows you those two changes at the end of the document.
Yeah.
Which if somebody wants to make a motion to support the actual ordinance with that change, that would be a simple thing to do.
So it would be when it comes down to it, Item Number Four, Update to Attachment A, highlighted in yellow.
Correct. Those two changes, the addition of the word and and the comma after 30 days.
All right. Any discussion from council? Councilor Glantz.
Really appreciate these changes, and I loved the VECO call out. Thank you, thank you.
Yeah. Seconded. Any other comments from council? All right, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing. Public hearings now open for Agenda Item Number Four, Ordinance Prohibiting Camping on Public Property in accordance with state and federal law. If you are in council chambers and wish to make a comment, now is the time. All right, and anybody in Zoom, now is the time. All right, I'm gonna go ahead and close public hearing. Without any other discussion or comment from council, I would entertain a motion.
Mayor. I make a motion that we adopt the ordinance prohibiting camping on public property in accordance with state and federal law as amended with Item Number Four, Updated to Attachment A, highlighted in yellow.
All right. Seconded by Councilor Wan. All right, roll call, please.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Witrin.
Yes.
Councilor Glantz.
Yes.
Councilor Ripma.
Yes.
Councilor Wan.
Yes.
Mayor Lauer.
Yes, all right. Thank you, everybody. Passes. Let's go ahead and move on to Agenda Item Number Five, Public Hearing, Ordinance First Introduced on August 22nd as well, in ordinance adding Section 8.42 to the municipal code regarding the unlawful or abusive transfer of material goods or money on a street or public right of way. Mr. Ray Young, the floor is yours again.
Thank you, Mayor. This ordinance was discussed, as you recall, two weeks ago. A public comment was taken, and there was no suggested changes for staff to go back and amend. So it continues as was written and presented two weeks ago. That's all I can offer. We have, as we told you before, we've crafted in a way to balance the free speech rights of our citizens and visitors with the needs to provide safety at busy intersections where this type of behavior is potentially dangerous for traffic and pedestrians.
All right. Again, comments or questions from council? Councilor Glantz.
I'm just curious, why we call it abusive solicitation? Is that to distinguish it from regular solicitation?
Yeah, the idea was is that there are two types of solicitation that we are trying to ban. One is that which occurs at dangerous places near highways where distracting drivers could create danger for the drivers, their vehicles, and the pedestrians asking. And the second thing is, is that those individuals who are exercising their free speech rights can do so at other places, however, they can't do it in a way that is abusive, harassing, I list like five different, that's why we separate it out. Because there aren't, you can solicit other places in the city that aren't dangerous, and we just wanna make sure that that's done in a kind and gentler way than some people may approach solicitation. That would be why.
Thank you.
Any other comments or questions from council? All right, let's open up the public hearing again. Public hearing is now open on an ordinance adding Section 8.42 to the municipal code regarding the unlawful or abusive transfer of material goods or money on a street or public right of way. If you are in Zoom, now is the time, but I didn't think you'd have anybody. And then in council chambers. All right. Not seeing anybody. Public hearing is closed. Again, I will entertain a motion if there's no other comments or questions.
Mayor, I'll make a motion that we adopt the ordinance adding Section 8.42 to the municipal code regarding the unlawful or abusive transfer of material or money on a street or public right of way.
Do I have a second? All right. Thank you very much. Agenda.
Councilor White.
Yes.
Councilor Witrin.
Yes.
Councilor Glantz.
Yes.
Councilor Ripma.
Yes.
Councilor Wan. Mayor Lauer.
Yes. Thank you again. All right, let's move on to a new ordinance. So instead of a re-read, Agenda Item Number Six, Public Hearing, Ordinance Introduction, and ordinance adopting text amendments to Chapters Three and Six of the Troutdale Development, Development Code, Dakota Meyer and Kara Brennike. You, Anne, you all have the floor. Good to see you again.
At this point, I'd like to introduce Dakota Meyer to council. He is a, one of our new planners of the community development. We are thrilled to have him. And this is his coming out party for council. I'm trying to give this nerve-wracking form as I can, but he seems to be holding up pretty well.
We met the other night, what was that, last week? Is that last?
Last week, CAC.
Yeah, CAC, yeah, good to see you. And you as well, Carrie. Nice to meet you as well.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. My name's Dakota Meyer. I'm the new associate planner here with the city. Carrie will be joining me. She is our consultant with MIG, helping through this code amendment. I'm going to share my screen for a presentation for case file 7513.
I thought that said 41 slides.
No.
I don't have my glasses.
No, we're not going to go over every, every word of the code.
It would have been fine, I'm just saying.
So as I mentioned, this is a, I will be presenting the staff report for case file 7513, Industrial Zone in Variance Amendments. Those are amendments to Chapter Three and Chapter Six of the Development Code. There are two base requests for this amendment. One is to reorganize the light industrial zone section of the code, Chapter Three. That is a request by staff. And the other is a request that came from Planning Commission to amend Chapter Six of the variance, to adjust the variance threshold from 30 to 15%. We will go through that a little bit later in this presentation. This slide here is just a representation of where the light industrial zone is within the city. This is going, these are the zones that will be affected by this amendment. This is an overview of the sections of the code with the proposed amendments. I will illustrate each of these in a little more detail in the slides to come. We'll start just with the top, Chapters Three and Six of the Development Code. Chapter 3.020, we'll be reordering the numbering. And then renumbering the zoning district outline from a, from a list to a, to a table view. CDC Sections 3.410 through 3.413, General Purpose and Intent. We need to move these general purpose and intent statements into a bundle, to bundle them together. Section 3.420, we're going to use a table directly after the, after the purpose and intense intention, intentions. We will provide a use table for all of these. The new table will consolidate the three lists from each individual zone into one use table. So we're going from the list view. This is to increase readability as well as bring the, this section of code in conformance with the remainder of the code that was changed, I believe it was last year. Or the year before, can't remember exactly. 3.41, or sorry, 3.430, Dimensional Standards, consolidates the dimensional standards list in each industrial zone into one table. And then CDC 3.430, Additional Standards, consolidates additional standards from each industrial zone into a list. And then we have down there at the bottom, which is 6.13, Variance, which revisions will increase the quantifiable provision upper threshold from 30% to 15%, sorry, will decrease. So the first proposed amendment is for 3.020 zoning. You can see here the re, the reorganizing of the numbers. It's, that's all we're doing here, is just changing the numbers to move them up. That'll be, you can see that more in a slide to come. So here is the old numbering system and the new numbering system. Currently in the old, we have a lot of reserved sections, and we will be filling those and moving this up in line. So here you can see where Industrial Park was, 3.450, now is 3.411. And this goes on for the remaining, remaining sections of the industrials section. Permitted uses and conditional uses go within, we'll be going into the table for industrial uses. Along with the uses for light industrial and general industrial. Dimensional standards will also go into a table format along with the remaining sections of the industrial. Let me make sure I'm on track here. Okay. This is an excerpt from our use table. This is the new reference system we are proposing for users, rather than three individual lists. The use, the uses are listed on the far right column. The middle columns are for the industrial park and light industrial, then general industrial. The specified standards are referenced on the far right. The key is P for permitted, C for conditional, and N for not permitted. This allows the staff and applicants to reference one table instead of three different lists to find specific, whether specific uses are allowed within the industrial zone. We have done the same for the dimensional standards, consolidating three different lists into one table. For the additional requirement section, three consolidated lists into, we consolidated three lists into one list. These are for user-friendly updates that match updates made to Troutdale code a year ago. Here is Section 6.130, Variance. At the August 22nd Planning Commission Meeting, Planning Commission Requested Amendments, or sorry, August 2nd Meeting, Planning Commission Requested Amendments to be added to Chapter Six, to Development Code, to change the threshold that determines if a variance is a Type 2 or a Type 3 review. Type 3, or Type 2 is done by staff and Type 3 is heard by hearing bodies such as planning commission. Currently, the code allows for expansion or reduction of a quantifiable provision by more than 10%, or, by more than 10%, but less than 30% to be a Type 2 application. Per Plan, Planning Commission's recommendations, planning staff has updated Section 3, 6.1300 variances to lower the upper threshold for a Type 2 and Type 3 variance applications from 30 to 15%. The purpose is to, the purpose of this change is to bring the city into conformance with other cities of similar size that are currently using this format.
That answers one of my questions.
Next section, you'll notice in your, in the staff report, we have a section, we have received a comment from Metro regarding Title 4. You can see on the slide there, this is a section, this is a, a map of the Metro Title 4 regionally specific, significant industrial areas. The section in gray is the regionally specific and significant industrial area along with other industrial land within the area. Metro provided a comment to ensure the proposed amendment would comply with the Title 4 Urban Growth Management Functional Plan. The request was that retail commercial use, such as retail modification, repair, sale, or rental of automobile, truck, trailer, heavy equipment, recreational vehicle, boat, or manufactured homes in all areas zone, light industrial limit buildings to no more than 5,000 square feet of sales or service area. Areas within regionally significant industrial areas, limit buildings to no more than 3,000 square feet of sales and service area. City staff added additional standards to 3.440.d.1 and 3.440.d.3 to the use table in the light industrial for the RSI. These are the approval criteria we will be, that will be used by both planning and commission and council. The proposed change to the Development Code does not conflict with applicable comprehensive land use goals or policies. The proposed, the proposed change is consistent with the applicable statewide planning goals. The proposed change is consistent with the applicable provisions of Metro Code. Public need is best satisfied by the particular change. The change will not adversely affect the health, safety, and welfare of the community. Staff and Planning Commission propose that each of these criteria are met. The procedure, the procedure will be, we will use to consider this request is for a Type 4 land use application. Planning Commission's authority is to make a formal recommendation to council. At the public hearing on August 2nd, Planning Commission voted to recommend approval of the text amendment to city council. City council is the decision-making entity. Notice of the application was provided by, was required as by code. City council action. The action council is asked to make is to consider Planning Commission's recommendation, which is to approve these proposed code amendments at two public hearings, city council hearings September 12th and September 26th. Actions are to confirm, amend, or reverse Planning Commission's recommendation, enact, or defeat all or part of the ordinance, remand some or all of the proposal to PC. Thank you.
Fine job, Dakota.
Thank you.
If I could get the screen back. Perfect, thank you. All right, do we have any comments or questions for staff from council? Councilor Glantz, please take it away.
A couple of questions. You said that it only, there was a couple areas that were impacted. Are those just the areas impacted? What about other areas in the city that are also under that same designation?
These are areas strictly within the, the light industrial that were, that the code is updating.
Okay.
It's updating the overall code for readability, but the overall RSI areas and industrial are only in the industrial area of the city.
Okay, and nothing was changed to the industrial park?
Let me double check. I don't believe so. Let me check real quick. Sorry about that.
Where is that?
Industrial.
Because that area behind Mount Hood Community College is all industri, is industrial park.
So this is strictly for the, the code change is for the light industrial as far as RSI goes. But it is, so that does not affect the section behind Mount Hood Community. But it is, so that does not affect the section behind Mount Community College. Rather, the, the update to the code, the reorganizing, quote unquote, would affect it, but that's just for purely readability standards.
Okay. And it said that the planning commission recommended that. Was that a unanimous recommendation?
It was a six to two vote.
Wouldn't it have to be five to two?
I'm sorry, five to two. I wrote it down.
Thank you.
Thank you councillor.
Yes.
Councillor Whitton?
Six to one vote.
I was gonna say it's staff.
See that?
Any other comments or questions from council?
Comment of, I like reducing the threshold back to fifteen percent. I know on planning, we've talked about that over the years of making, making it more public, some of these variances. So I think bringing more, more of these to light and bringing them in front of planning commission is gonna be a good thing.
That's right.
I just see our planning director in the audience. I always like to hear from him on this sort of thing, if that's possible.
Yeah.
I guess do that in a public comment then?
We can. I don't mind if we bring Tanny up. No? Let's do it. Mr. Stafford. No, you're good. You're good Dakota. You can stay. Hang out.
Good evening, Mayor Lauer, City Councilors, Tanny Staffordson, Troutdale Planning Commission Chair. And most of these are things that you've seen before. Some of these had to be broken apart and brought back and there was notice issues, things of that nature. So most of this is all work that we've been through once before. And we did get comments from Metro. Who you would think they'd have better things to do, but I guess not. About the rezoning of land. And the only thing I would say to that is I don't know that you could call some of this regionally sensitive land that we're talking about. This is more from my perspective, this is more land that has sat in a blight state or undeveloped state for better than a decade. And you may have a chance to do something positive with it. And especially when you've got a willing landowner that's working says, hey, this is what we need. We didn't seem to think that this was like, you know, we're gonna put in a nuclear power plant or something. You know, something that could be reasonably accommodated and we thought it would be benefit for the city. And as far as the variances that did come from Planning Commission and that recommendation was primarily due to some of our more recent land use applications. And you look at the one, the Fox development that's on Halsey. That's kind of a big one. And that one actually was one that cleared the hurdle of thirty percent because it was twenty nine percent and could have been ran as a type two. And we had significant public hearings on that because it was bumped to a type three. And I felt it was a real, we felt it was a very positive process allowing the public to come in and testify. And we saw that. And then we also saw, you know, some things with the the home forward development and other things. And we just felt that it would be better if those larger variances, when you start thinking about something that's gonna raise the height of the building ten feet or going to reduce, you know, thirty or fifty parking spots. Those are things maybe that the community may want to weigh in on. And so we felt that that would be better served.
Sounds good. Any questions for? Yeah, go ahead councillor.
Obviously it wasn't unanimous vote. What was some of the concerning points from planning?
Paul's on planning. I think Paul voted no, and I can't even remember frankly, what it was. There was, there was something in there that didn't sit well with him. So he voted no on the package. And we did do a work session and then we did a hearing. You know, and tried to pump through it, but oh, I know, I actually, I know what it was. He felt that doing any type of automobile stuff in light industrial prob, might not be appropriate. That type of a use. And that was, that was his challenge and the, the group really didn't want to parcel that out. They wanted to try to honor the commitment at that point.
Thank you. Thanks. Thanks.
That's the one. Anything?
How many times over the last five years has this change, we were to make this change, or how many times has this actually come into effect?
This?
This has gone to a type three.
I don't have five years, but I have some research over the last three.
Come back with five.
Average the over the past two and a half years to three years, two land use cases would have been brought to PC. So it's a very short, it's not a drastic change by lowering it. But it is, those couple would have, those two would have been brought over the last couple of years because we do have quite a bit of variances within the city. So this threshold, while it will increase the number coming to PC, it's out of, it's a very small.
And then what, how does that delay somebody getting the variance approved or brought to the panel or whatever? What's the from having a new type two to be a type three? What's the delay on that for that specific?
From my experience, a type two application can go anywhere from, you know, three to four months to where a type four application typically adds about a month on to that. So four to five, give or take depending on when they can get to PC. When the application is deemed complete because then that's when, that's what triggers the PC meeting. So that's just my personal experience. I have not dealt with one here at the city yet. So if you would like to speak to that.
Just to clarify, you said type four.
Sorry, type, I meant three. Sorry.
So you're saying it would be an extra five months?
No, it's an extra month for application.
One extra month.
Yeah, one extra month. So for the longevity of the total application.
Add a month on over the two over the last two and a half years total.
And if I may interject, the hundred twenty day rule from completion of the file of the application still applies. If it's going to go more than four months from, from a complete application, the applicant has to consent to the extension. So there's still a four month trigger on it all.
Okay, so it has to be, should be completed in four months?
Yes. If they're working on something that isn't going, you know, that's not working with completeness or we are requiring them to submit something else, then they can request to extend that date. But that has to be up to their consent.
Jeffrey, it's really hard to hear you.
Yeah, the thing is.
Do we have an extra one? Any other comments or questions from council for staff or for Kerry Brennike? All right, let's go ahead and open up the public hearing portion of this agenda item. Public hearings open on an ordinance adopting text amendments to chapters three and six of the Troutdale Development Code. If you have comments for staff on this matter, you can go ahead and now's the time to make those comments. Let's start with Zoom. Anybody on Zoom wishes to make a comment, now's the time. Just go ahead and unmute yourself, state your name and city of residence for the record. All right. Not seeing anybody there. Anybody in council chambers? All right, not seeing anybody there. Let's close public com. So we'll see this back again.
Yes.
So this was our introduction. So we'll see this back. I don't have my calendar.
Twenty sixth of this month.
Twenty sixth of September. Okay, all right.
Can I ask another question?
No, it's, it's over. Yes, please.
Just to follow up on my other question. So the two instances, what was the percent variance in those two instances?
Check that. One was in two thousand twenty one and that was, it was a setback that brought it just over the that was a twenty six percent variance. So that would, it was under the threshold for a type three. So now that would bring it. Another one was in two thousand twenty one, which is a seventeen percent variance to setback as well.
Okay. Please do. Tanny Staffordson, ladies and gentlemen.
On the, the variances, we were at thirty percent, which is significantly high, higher than most municipalities. And another thing that's happened is the state has majorly changed the setback regulations and things. So a lot of what would have been a variance isn't even considered a variance anymore.
Say that one more time.
Yeah.
So there used to be variances granted for particular projects on a lot. And a lot of those have gone away because we cannot, we don't have the same setback rules that we had before. So things that used to be needed a variance don't even need a variance now.
Gotcha. So they've narrowed the variances down to.
They've done away with probably half of them.
Okay. Thank you for the clarification. All right, we'll see you back again.
Thank you very much.
Fine job.
Thank you, council.
Your first time.
Thought we have the first read on this, that'll be last year or something. Isn't that?
So that
Ready to vote.
In a sense, yes. So this was brought, this very similar application was brought under case file seventy five twelve. At the time, council voted to deny the application to make some adjustments. And so that's why I went back. And now we're bringing it back through under seventy five thirteen.
Okay, I remember that now. Thank you.
Fantastic memory.
Good job.
All right, everybody, we're gonna move back to agenda item number three, an update from Senator Gorsick and Representative Hudson on the two thousand twenty three legislative session. Representative and senators, very, very good to see you both. And council, both of you, welcome back to council.
Yes.
Good point.
It's been a while, but we've both been here before.
Well, wellness mayor, members of the council, thank you so much for, for having us both. Wanting to keep in contact with all the different cities that we represent. We want to make sure we're checking in with you guys. But it's been really great having the communication that we've had even just individually and throughout the, throughout the session as concerns have arisen. I have some examples of, of times when, when you're the mayor or, or city manager or other city councillors have reached out to us and, and told us what was on your mind. And, and we really appreciate that. We want to keep that keep that spirit of, of communication going. Let's see. I think it was a really successful legislative session despite some some difficulty with the walkout. We were able to come to an agreement and bring everyone back to the building. And though it was quite a marathon there at the end, we got a lot of great bills passed. Some of the most important ones, I think, are, for instance, the housing and homelessness package, House Bill fifty nineteen and other related bills that went with that. That put two hundred million dollars more toward efforts to create stable and affordable housing and help people transition out of homelessness. It created new shelter beds. It helped partner with service providers such as Join or Cultural Initiatives or Urban League or Transition Projects. It continued work on affordable housing that's already in progress. So places like the Fairview Arms and the Alderweireld Apartments have, have created this groundwork that we're building on. And then another aspect to that are the bills related to housing and disaster recovery. Wildfires have, have shown that they're, they can strike unexpectedly and, and you don't have to be right out in the, the middle of the forest. Fires have threatened and, and destroyed some of our suburban areas here around the, the state and our, the, the communities effective, affected had have to recover from those. So we had bills this session that made it easier for homeowners to recoup loss from their property. That made it easier to cite houses for rebuilding to get people, to get homes built quickly and get people back into homes. And then we also passed a bill for some resiliency grants. The grant project program is being constructed right now, now that the session is over, but it will be able to offer grants to organizations, including cities who want to apply for some disaster preparedness and resiliency needs. That, that could be anything from PPE to a public meeting space that can serve as a as a management point, as a, you know, sort of central point for disaster when a disaster strikes. And so I, I highly encourage this council to consider what disaster preparedness means the city might have and look forward to that grant program getting into place. Another really great takeaway from this last session had to do with public safety. We had bills to help curb gun violence, bills to fund our public defense system so that we can actually move cases to trial in a timely way. And so that everyone gets the, the defense to which they're constitutionally entitled. And also a bill, HB twenty six seventy six for crime victims compensation. And, and so, and there were many other packages that went along with that, protecting neighborhoods or specifically protecting school kids. We had a record funding for education this session as well as a separate literacy initiative because we know that the, the years during which kids are learning to read are so crucial. And that kids who are behind in reading in the third grade have all sorts of other difficulties later on. And so we're, we're really targeting that as, as a state. And then also some school safety measures. An Oregon version of Alyssa's law to give schools the chance to have schoolwide alarms able to be triggered by, by any member of staff. And so no one has to go run to spread the alarm, but is able to walk down in their room and let everyone know as quickly as possible. For my own part, I was working on some bills that were particular to my, my background. Having to do with education, with helping support teachers, supporting students, especially students with disabilities. And also a bill that both of us were, were working on. It turned out to be a Senate bill, so I really shouldn't. We started it in both houses. We started in both chambers to make sure that one of those versions got through. It ended up being the Senate version, but we needed a, some lottery funding to make sure that our levees are maintained well so that if the river does rise, we, we stay dry out here. And so that, that passed and I'm, I'm happy to report that. We also brought some great resources to East Mottoma County. And I know Senator Gorsick is gonna talk about some of those things. And so I won't go into detail about all of them. Oh, I did want to mention though a bill that was particularly important to the Troutdale and to this council, but only in that it was a bad bill. And so Senator and I worked hard to make sure it didn't pass. This would be House Bill twenty five forty eight. And when Mr. Young reached out to me and said, hey, do you, do you see this coming down the pike? You, you realize what a bad effect this would have on Troutdale and similar cities around the area. It was a bill that would have changed how the Metro Business Income Tax was calculated. And if that bill had gone into effect, it would have been a big decrease for cities like Troutdale in their, in their revenues. in their, um, in their revenues. And that, of course, would have had a terrible effect on city services, police, fire and, and all the other essential work that cities do.
Let me interject here. Uh, that was a bill that was going to change how Multnomah County calculated its business income tax, which we get over a million dollars a year from. So with the help of the representative and Senator, we were able to, um, kill that bill, which would have really cut into some of our general fund income. So.
And quick to respond to, which was fantastic. So.
Um, I think one of the, the most touching episodes from the, the two thousand twenty-three session though, was when the, uh, when Mount, when Legacy Mount Hood, um, Hospital announced the closure, the surprise closure of its birthing center. Uh, I really appreciate, um, many local leaders, including, uh, you Mayor Lauer and, and your councillor one for being, um, part of the team that responded really quickly to that. And with not only a strong message about how it would be, um, really detrimental to our community, particularly underserved members of our community and some of the most vulnerable people who live in East County. Uh, but then helping formulate a plan for how we would, um, either make sure the, uh, birthing center didn't close or get back open as quickly as possible. And, uh, we ended up successfully lobbying, uh, the Oregon Health Authority and the governor to make sure that, um, the waiver that Legacy applied for, that would have allowed them to close, uh, the birthing center was not approved because their plan for attending to patient care was not sufficient. And the, the Oregon, uh, Health Authority agreed with us. But it couldn't have happened if it weren't for the community support, uh, from local leaders, from the, uh, doctors and nurses who actually worked at the birthing center, um, and from, uh, local community organizations who, um, showed up on sidewalks with signs, standing in front of buildings and letting everybody know, um, how important that birthing center was. Well, with that, I will turn it over to Senator Gorsick.
Thank you, uh, for listening, Lou. First off, it's a pleasure to be here.
It's a pleasure to see you.
And, uh, of course I remember the old building, which I, I see is now being renovated into what?
A, it's being renovated into a brew pub.
Really? Well, there's some, there's some semblance.
We're keeping the old, we're hoping to keep the, the old building intact.
Going back to a dance hall.
Yeah, exactly.
Yep, exactly.
That's, that's awesome. It's, it, you know, you hate to see old buildings like that just be torn down, so I'm glad to see that. Um, I also heard that there's movement on the, um, Sandy River in terms of the development there. Is that fully done or is it in progress?
Couple of things. One, the Sandy River Trail is fully funded, fully planned. We're waiting on Union Pacific Railroad to approve our ninety percent design. And by the way, the railroad, they are very.
Oh, yes.
Um, careful in going through this process, but we're in their, we're in their slot, we're in the tunnel, so we should be going good to get there in the next couple of months. And hopefully next summer, we're still knocking on wood to break ground on the Sandy River Trail, which would be wonderful for the community. Uh, it'll be great. And second of all, we've selected the, uh, community selected Capstone to be our preferred developer. And they are right now, are wrestling with Time Equity, the owner of the vault, to come up with some accommodations where they both can live together and prosper. And so we're just waiting to see how that happens in the next couple of months.
Well, I'm happy to see that. Uh, you know, I lived in Troutdale for many years. It's true, I went to the dark side last year and moved to Gresham, but I, uh, I have, uh, always had a strong affinity for Troutdale and I still pay attention to what's going on here. One thing, I don't know how you all feel, but it, it has always struck me that, um, perhaps there needs to be some sort of a welcome center or something like that for the gorge here in Troutdale. If you go all the way to the Dows, there's something, right? And if you go, um, you know, to other places at the gateways of things, there are things. So if you ever want to talk about that, I'd certainly be, uh, interested.
Well, let's see, maybe next, next session, we get something on the gravy train, uh, that happened this year.
There you go.
With the lottery money revenue bonds.
Right.
Lots of cities got lots of millions of dollars.
I will tell you something that both Zach and I know, and that is, you need to ask for things.
Yeah.
And I looked at that list and I was thinking, I know now that, uh, we, there are other things that we could have asked for besides what we did. So anytime that the city says, oh, it'd be nice to be able to do this or that, but we can't afford it, you should definitely communicate that because with ways and means, you already know what the answer is if you don't, if you don't ask. So I say, we ask. So, um, you know, we have that nice welcome march. Meanwhile, um, so Zach and I and Ricky Ruiz, who's in fifty, House District fifty, um, have, I think, formed a very effective team in working on East County issues. And I think that we have been able to get some good pieces of legislation and also, especially out of the federal money that came out, I think we've gotten some good, uh, money for East County. As you all know, and I was just, we were just at Wood Village, that's why we relate. But if you look at us from Interstate two oh five east, we would, if you cut us off, we would be the poorest county. And that other police of the county, that would be the richest county. And too often people say the magic Multnomah County, like we all have money. And so there's still, even though we've seen some good development, we've seen some good industrial properties come online, lots of good stuff. We still have a lot of need too. One of the things that we were just talking about at Wood Village, um, the tremendous need around, um, the mobile home parks and the need to preserve those. To my mind, those are ever bit as important as some of the, you know, the hotels that proposals are to convert them to housing. I think preserving those home parks, not just preserving them as status quo, but improving them, um, become very important for us too. So we are painfully aware of some of the challenges that we face out here. And my perennial problem with TriMet continues. TriMet did their alleged upgrade of service. Did you notice there was no upgrade of service out here?
We noticed, yeah.
Not a surprise. And, uh, so I'll be, I, I'm sure they hate me by now, but I will be harping at them some more. There's lots of things TriMet can do and they simply, for whatever reason, have done some things into East County, but they won't do as much out here where we all are. I don't know what the block is there, but it's, um, it's not good. So the fortunate thing was that our colleagues came back. The unfortunate thing was that they were out for a while. And so we, as Representative Hudson said, we were under a huge time crunch to get done by the constitutional deadline. So I think, um, we ran through the majority of bills for this last session in about two weeks' time. So, you know, the problem with that, I mean, I think we passed a lot of good things, but the problem is some things didn't get the vetting that they needed. Some things didn't survive because there wasn't enough time. And so that's, that's always, um, an issue. I certainly hope, um, that everyone will be back in the winter, even though it's only a five-week session, because, um, we have plenty of things to do. And, uh, you know, I hate to see my, my friends on the other side not there. So, um, I can tell you though, I had my own problem since, uh, you probably know that my heart decided that it was gonna not let me stay for the full session. And that was my surgeon's fault. He told me, look, no, we're not waiting. You're having the surgery now. And it's like, but, and he, he was very clear, don't ask. It's not happening. So, uh, but we already had a lot of bills that we've been working on. My colleagues, uh, both Zach and Ricky, were able to help me with, uh, moving some of these forward once they went to the House. Um, and, uh, my staff did a good job. So we had a number of pieces of legislation that passed in spite of that difficulty. One of the things, and I continue, will continue to work on this, um, is Senate Bill sixteen, which is trying to improve of both freight rail and passenger rail service in the entire state. Um, I have a secondary bill that did not make it and there were some difficulties around it, but we're going to come back to it. There's a lot of, um, there's a lot of freight rail that does not currently carry passengers. A lot of it's Portland and Western, yeah, some of that's a spinoff from the Old Southern Pacific. But they have actually indicated that they would be interested in discussing that sort of thing. So I can see where we might be able to have, uh, something, wouldn't, obviously it wouldn't be high speed, but faster speed than say Max, especially when Max gets to downtown and runs into what's essentially a large urban dam. Because they have to go so slow. So that's coming back. We also have, uh, passed a bill, Senate Bill one nineteen, which is telling ODOT, our fine friends at the Department of Transportation, that they need to be involved in, um, exactly. And, and we sent them that music. It's like a wake-up call. But, uh, that they need to do, um, apprenticeships. They have been excluded in the past. And I can't think of a better state agency to be involved in getting people up to speed on those sorts of trades, um, than ODOT. So we're, um, going to hopefully get that going very quickly. Um, we had a bill, Senate Bill two thirty-eight. It was designed to, uh, improve, um, drug and alcohol education in schools. Uh, a lot of this was surrounding fentanyl. And so it's not meant to be something that's going to take up a lot of time. But we want to make sure that schools are talking to kids about fentanyl because it can be such a dangerous drug. And sometimes kids aren't even aware that what they have taken had fentanyl in it. So, um, that's Senate Bill two three eight. Um, and then there's a really interesting one, Senate Bill two five six. This came to me and my staff, I think about three, four years ago. Uh, the Honda Corporation came and met with us and they said, did you know that there are counterfeit airbags? Nope, never heard of that one. There's a lot of weird things out there, but I hadn't heard of that one. Well, it turns out that there are folks who will either give you, act, uh, they will sell you, and it's usually selling you on the, on the, on the cheap side, a very low-cost airbag that has nothing but maybe plastic bags in it, doesn't do anything. In some cases, there are actually stories of shrapnel being inside of these airbags. So you know they explode out towards you and sometimes there have been metal pieces embedded in those. So imagine you're in a wreck and you expect that it's going to protect you and then you get a face full of some of this stuff. So that, uh, passed and, uh, the automobile industry was very interested in seeing this bill, uh, go forward. So that was good. We also passed, uh, Senate Bill six one five, and that has to do with street racing. Something that has frustrated many, many people around the state, but especially in the metropolitan area where, um, you know, entire intersections are shut down, people squirrel around at high speeds. Sometimes people are injured or even killed. And so we're, uh, putting more teeth into that statute so that the, uh, so law enforcement has the tools that they need to try and shut some of this down. So I was very pleased that we got six one five passed. Zach has mentioned a lot of the things that he and Ricky and I all worked on in terms of a lot of the money that came from the federal government. For, um, I think the first time, the lea- leadership in the legislature actually let us legislators take that federal money and apply it to the programs that we wanted to do. Which was a breath of fresh air, to say the least. Normally it has to go through ways and means and we beg and plead to get what we want. Um, and maybe you get it, maybe you don't, but we actually were able to say, all right, here's our allotment money and these are the things that we're gonna do. So, um, I think that, uh, we were able to do a lot of good things, including, uh, supporting some things for the college, supporting some things for, um, La Plaza Esperanza, which is, uh, developing a really good facility over on Stark, across from Boys and Girls Clubs, I think, um, and things like that. It was in Gresham, but do you know, uh, the Charlotte Woods? Where, you know, that wetland and those trees have been there forever? Yeah, we were able to set money aside so that that wasn't, we weren't going to see those trees lost. Terrible place to cut all the trees down, right at the headwaters of Fairview Creek. So, um, I was really pleased. And I've been driving past that place since I was a kid.
Oh, yeah.
And it's just like, no, no, I mean, some places we just, we shouldn't. So we were able to help with that. At any rate, if there's anything else, we could, you know, talk forever. Counselor White says, yes, I know.
One question, are, is there any discussion going on about, uh, corrections repealing Val Measure one ten? I know the city of Portland has been doing things that would suggest they really, really want you to. And I would expect this council, is that was the one that legalized use of hard drugs?
Decriminalize.
Decriminalize, not legalize.
Right.
Same thing in Oregon.
Here's the thing about Measure one ten. The, the mistake with Measure one ten is if you're gonna do something like they did, you have to have the support services that are intended to be where you divert people if you're not willing to incarcerate. Except we didn't have them in place. And so that's fueling people saying, yes, we need to get rid of Measure one ten. I don't know yet, um, if there's enough steam to get that on the ballot, but I wouldn't be surprised that it will probably come up as a ballot measure. The sad thing is, um, you know, when you just put people in prison for drugs and there's no really good programs in the prison, uh, you're really not helping anybody. However, law enforcement, it's so, and, and in my, in a past life, I was a police officer. And it is so frustrating to get called on these folks and then not, you know, and people are saying, all right, take care of that guy. And there's nowhere to go with them. On top of which, uh, many years ago, it was a land far, far away and it was a different galaxy. We used to have this thing called detox, only not the one they have now, which is a resident thing. We had an overnight facility, you could hold somebody until they sobered up.
Hooper.
Yes, the, the Hooper Center. I took people there a lot. When I worked that district, uh, we had our regulars and you'd see them every afternoon staggering down the street. You don't want them to get run over. So you'd say, hey, Joe, how's it going? Uh, you know, you want to go to detox, go to detox and you'd take them over. Now, we weren't solving anything, but we were keeping them safe. And we don't, police don't even have that anymore, not to mention the loss of mental health facilities, which have gone away too. So, I mean, if, if these folks are going to advocate for these changes in programs, you gotta have the support. And if you don't have the support, fire, police, you know, they respond to these things and it is, they can't do much with, with that. So I don't know how that's gonna turn out. I know it's, I, I think based on what I'm seeing, it's gonna be a big issue going into the.
Well, I would say from our experience, the biggest issue, it's, it's so closely connected with the homeless issue.
Yeah.
And that we also do not have adequate places for people to get supportive care and housing.
Right.
And you're right, you do this, but then what are you gonna do?
Right.
And we don't have the infrastructure to send people with mental health or drug addiction. You can do something, legislature next. I'm just speaking for what we see in the city.
Yeah.
Really encourage the money to be used appropriately for good programs.
Right.
And it's nice to have the coercive effect of criminal justice as the place to coerce them into treatment. Because I'm being a, um, former alcoholic myself, when, when you're addicted to something, you don't think clearly about, oh, I'll just go to this program because it's free. You have to, I'll, I'll, and be forced into the program and get sober six months. But crap, why didn't I come sooner? Because you were addicted.
Right. And that's why the drug courts, before one ten came into place, I went and, and observed some of those, um, procedures. They were really, really good and the judges were amazing. But they had the stick to be able to say, you're gonna go. But they also had, you know, they would have the DA, they had a treatment person there. They had a, um, a person that was there to be kind of the mentor. I mean, it was an amazing process. I, I, you know, had never seen a courtroom operated quite like that. So, um, yeah.
Okay, that's what I had the question for, because that's, like I said, tied to the homeless issue very closely.
Yeah, Ray stole my thunder, but.
Ray.
But it is, it's, it's an issue that's tied closely to Troutdale, East County, Multnomah County as a whole, the state as a whole, you know, and it's, it's tied relatively closely to homelessness. And, and the problem that we're, um, facing in constantly asking our, um, regional leaders, um, for the assistance in helping, doing more here in the city and, and partnering with, um, other, you know, like, you both know, we don't have a health department here in Troutdale.
Right.
We're beholden to Multnomah County.
Right.
Health Department. Um, we don't have the means of. We're beholden to Multnomah County Health Department. We don't have the means of working with their department right now. We would love for the ability to have those means so we can help for Troutdale specific and to help get, you know, the people that are living in our city. The help that they need. So we just don't have that ability right now. How we get there? Maybe that's a longer conversation for another time.
Well, and as you've seen, if you've paid any attention to the press, let alone working in the city, we're a long ways from having a good, solid, unified way of dealing with this.
Yep.
And it's not for lack of money.
Exactly. That's for sure. Let's, do you mind if we open it up for questions?
No, go ahead.
Alright, we had a good point. Counselor Lance.
Yep, I want to thank Senator Gorsak for voting against the governor's housing bill. Thank you very much. I participate in the LOC housing policy, housing development policy. And some of the concerns we have have to do around with infrastructure. And I know that there's, you know, the whole governor's task force on trying to get some of this coordinated. And then the other thing that I know that's being worked on that I think is a great idea is telling cities, here's what we need you to do, not necessarily telling them how to do it, but letting them decide for themselves. You know, you need to have an extra five thousand units or whatever that is out of, I think, thirty-six thousand the governor wants. And just letting us figure out how to do that, not putting in all these restrictive codes and everything else that aren't appropriate in a lot of instances. So thank you very much for your
Counselor, you bring up something that both, both Zach and I voted against this thing. And I can tell you, we were just having the same conversation down the road in Wood Village. Thirty-four fourteen was a bad bill. It was, and the problem with thirty-four fourteen was it was kind of sprung on us in the legislature towards the end of the session, when all this other madness was going on with all of these long days and all these bills that had to be passed. There wasn't enough time, for instance, for all of us to talk to all of our cities and say, you know, have a really reasonable, solid discussion about all of this. I have to tell you though, we have to watch for it because based on what I'm hearing, and I, and I said this at Wood Village, the son or daughter, whatever you want to call it, of thirty-four fourteen is coming back. And we will have to be watching it very carefully to make sure it's gonna be something that's actually gonna work for cities. I'm, I'm very disheartened though, it's not surprising, I've seen the governor do this before, where housing becomes the only thing. And then there's no worry about environmental concerns, historical neighborhoods or a whole host of other things. And, and I applaud her effort for being concerned about homelessness. I'm, I'm concerned too, but we don't want to destroy what we have in the process. I think we can do, Zach and I were both saying.
Zach, I'll stop talking now, so you can. No, you, you covered it. Yes, thank you. It was, like you said, yeah, thirty-four fourteen. You know, it did two things, two values that we, we both wanted to, or, you know, housing and versus the environment, things that we wish wouldn't need to clash in legislation. But in the end, we both felt that thirty-four fourteen was not, the, the concepts behind it, we're, we're not ready to go and it would be too, too onerous on, on cities and to pose too much of a threat to wildlands and environments. So
I mean, not even just that, it also impacted things like infrastructure. You can't just add all this housing and not pay for infrastructure to support all that. So.
Well, and, and to my mind, it's a little like Measure one ten. I mean, you, you want to do these things, but there's no the supporting infrastructure is not there. And in either case, that was, that was what happened. The other thing you should watch for is the, the governor's blue ribbon. I don't know what, whatever it is, but the, the current housing group, I guess I'll call it a group.
Task force, yeah.
Yeah, task force, there you go. They've said some disturbing things about, oh, you know, why do we need to worry about wetlands? And well, first off, I don't want an apartment complex built in a wetland. I think that's probably a bad idea. It's bad environmentally, it's bad for people. But that they were even willing to vocalize that. We, we need to talk reasonably about things. Because I think we can find a land that we need without violating all of the things that thirty-four fourteen would have done. Now, the reason I was conflicted, to be honest, about fourteen was one of my Republican friends, Dick Anderson, who's a senator on the coast. His community struggled mightily with having nowhere to go in terms of the growth boundary and nowhere to develop land for housing. And so for me, that was where I was thinking. It's like, you go to the beach, you see it all the time now, help wanted, help wanted, help wanted, because no one can afford to live there. So I understand the need and I think we could have a really constructive way of discussing this and coming to something that might actually work for cities. I'm just not sure the, the present course is gonna do that.
Yeah, and I'll echo what Counselor Lance said. It's just, you know, we appreciate you looking through that lens of how these bills affect our cities and voting accordingly. And also when that next iteration of thirty-four fourteen comes around, to encourage to look through that same lens.
Yeah, definitely. And when you see it, or, well, when you see it, it's gonna happen. Please do reach out to us so that our offices can really have some good ammunition and information to fight back on that and to say, no, that doesn't work. We might be able to do this, but we need to have time to, to talk it through.
Yeah. Mr. Trump.
If I may pass on something, I got to have breakfast this morning with cities of Cornelius and Hillsborough. Economic Development Director and City Manager and yesterday Beaverton. And we're talking about the thirty-four fourteen issues. And the big one that the West Side cities are talking about is the need to balance the infrastructure problem is one of, of how do you pay for it if you're a city?
Right.
And the only way cities know how to pay for things is to develop employment or industrial lands,
Right.
which don't require the services and subsidize the housing, the services to the housing portions. So it's, if you look at the twenty forty plan, the twenty forty plan requires a balance of employment and housing. That also cuts down on the transportation needs if people can live near where they work. So the balance that, that needs to be built into anything like thirty-four fourteen or else it just becomes an abomination.
Yeah.
Thank you for letting me.
Oh, no, and I, and I completely agree with you. One of the problems that we currently have is that so much of, you know, our industry and businesses are farther away from the people who work there because they can't afford to live closer. Which means that that impacts the transportation system, which is, yeah, I, I I'm the co-chair of the Joint Transportation Committee and we're struggling mightily with trying to find the dollars to build infrastructure. And it comes back to exactly what you said.
Any other comments or questions from counsel? Counselor White?
Yeah, thank you both for being here tonight. I know you both have roots here. And I appreciate your willingness to listen to us and Senator Gorsak, I was gonna thank you for your work last year on the catalytic converter. It did. And I had a friend who did Meals on Wheels and he was in visiting and came out and his cab had been cut off.
Yeah.
It's expensive.
And it only takes just a handful of minutes to get in there and cut them off.
Yeah. I think you're on track with the airbag thing as well. And I loved your idea on, on the yeah, we're the National Scenic Gorge and we're the closest city to it, but it's not in Troutdale. So there's very little we can actually do. So it'd be perfect if you guys, I'm thinking along the lines of like a ranger station. Because, you know, that, that area, as we know it, is thousand acres, has really gotten out of hand
Yeah.
back there. And it's, it's destroying that environment. And it's, it's an area we all enjoy.
Right.
And we think of it as our city, even though it's not.
Right.
And then the, the, working with the train where they're allowing passengers, we, we've been trying to come up with a way to get like a train stop at our new urban redevelopment site that would go to the Multnomah Falls. So
Yeah.
Keep that in the back of your head if you would.
I will tell you that, you know, I've been working on trying to get the Pioneer established, which came through here and went on through Northeast Oregon and out to Boise and into Utah and then connected up to Chicago. With the efforts that we've had so far, we've at least seen the Federal Railway Administration now put the Pioneer on their map as a possibility. So we just have to keep pushing on that. Anytime you get a chance to say something about the Pioneer, please do. And I, I, I think, you know, losing that was, was tremendously poor planning on the federal government's part. When you look at the far west, excluding California, there's, there's a big hole where we should have railroad routes that did use to exist. And, you know, I think more and more now that tourism idea around rail has really come back. And so imagine if we had a station and we had, you know, a nice tourist sort of venue. I think it's great that we have the, the bus through the gorge, but I think there's a lot more that could be done here.
Yeah.
Oh, and by the way, back in the day, well, what, about three, now about four or five years ago, Counselor White and I had some dealings with the Port of Portland over the Troutdale Airport. And I still don't trust the Port of Portland.
Well, they, we actually, they actually, Ed knows more about it than I do, but they actually stopped that plan.
Did they really?
Yeah. And it was from our input.
Wow. Yeah, because they, I thought that they were just basically trying to sunset it right into the trash.
In fact, the person who, whom they just hired away from my office is now first to study the Troutdale Airport and then hopes to go and study the Hillsborough Airport.
Yeah.
You may know his name. It's Chris Damgan. He used to be the director of planning and development here in the city of Troutdale.
Oh, no kidding?
Yes. And so he is well aware of all and he's redoing a beginning, going back to the beginning and talking to the industrial users and finding out what they would like.
Well, and that's the key, I think, to this whole thing. But
So if you ever talk to the industrial users, they should be aware that they can influence it now in the early stages. It's really just beginning.
Oh, excellent. Okay. Can you send me some information on that?
I, I only know what I, I had lunch with Chris once or twice and I don't have anything in my
Is he the, the Port of Portland?
Yes, he's now with the Port of Portland.
So we're gonna want to talk to him.
Yes. And he was Development Director here about a year ago.
Oh, wow, that's great. Yeah. Well, I see a real need for both of those airports, Troutdale and, and Hillsborough. And to get rid of Troutdale, because I think, my unbiased opinion, I thought that they were just looking at industrial land and they were not interested in keeping the airport. An airport is an asset that you will never get back. And once it's gone, it's, it's gone. And I just would hate to see our community lose that. So, so that's great. Well, maybe, maybe we had a little, yeah.
Keep being Danny in mind. I'd be glad to help out on that.
Alright, sounds good.
Sorry, Danny, you're volunteering again.
Well, if we're at a time, I was gonna open it up to public comment, if you, if you wouldn't mind, hang out for just a couple more minutes.
Go ahead.
Yeah. Let's go ahead and open it up to public comment. Let's start with Zoom. If anybody has any comments or questions for State Senator Gorsak or State Representative Hudson, now's the time. Go ahead and unmute yourself and state your name and city residence for the record. Alright, not seeing anybody. Anybody in council chambers? Yeah. Mr. Kester.
Greetings, Adrian Kester, Troutdale resident. Counselor Lance pretty much took over the first half of what I was gonna say about infrastructure and dealing with housing and infrastructure, but I would expand that only very slightly in that not just around just thinking about any things like utility infrastructure, but also things like food services and medical services.
Yeah.
That because of the limitations of our, of our transportation that we're particularly here in East County, people have a hard time getting to. But the other two things that I guess I wanted to bring up is I wanted to express appreciation for Senate Bill two eighty-three, looking at increases in teacher retention and possibly increasing funding for special education. But also on the special education note, there are some potential real unintended consequences around Senate Bill eight nineteen, which just went into effect here in July, allowing basically parents to override the school districts and allowing in the length of the day that their students go to school. And in some cases, I know from experience, parents inevitably, because of their own circumstances, are, are taking advantage of this because they need, they need a full day of care for their child when it's not necessarily in the child's educational best interest. And while the schools should be able to accommodate the, the child for the whole day for their, for their full educational experience, in many cases, the schools and the districts simply do not have the funding resources to be able to do it. Many of these kids need all day one-on-ones just for themselves. And the schools simply do not have the resources and, and infrastructure to be able to put this in place. So there's some potential for some real damaging unintended consequences for some of these kids as a result of Senate Bill eight nineteen. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Kester. And to reply to that, I was just talking to an OEA member, one of the leaders. And she was talking about eight nineteen. One of the things that she pointed out is also the lack of qualified teachers to do the work. And I am happy to see that at least eight nineteen is opening the door. We're actually getting some discussion. Because we had some kids that were getting maybe two hours a week of instruction. And so I'm hoping that we can bring everybody together and get to a place that works for everyone. But you're right. You gotta have the resources, you gotta have the teachers.
Yeah, I definitely understand how, I mean, some school districts were abusing the concept because they, they didn't have the funds to be able to provide any sort of services. But at the same time, if you're gonna force the districts into doing what they should be doing and educating the child for a full day, they've gotta have the resources to be able to do it. Otherwise, you're just, you're hurting the kid and everybody else in the classroom in order to get a piece of education experience out of it. Anyway, thank you.
Thank you. Anybody else? Well, someone else is gonna have to stand up now.
It's my night tonight.
Dear night.
Tanny Stapp, a Troutdale resident. Just a, a couple of things, you know, you, you mentioned about the environment. And we've seen it planning where for especially a workforce housing project, we will completely fill in a wetland.
Interesting. Now, do you have to mitigate for that?
The state says no.
Really?
We don't have anything to do with it. It comes in and it's like, we can fill in an entire wetland. And that's something, yeah, that's something that's totally out of our wheelhouse.
Interesting.
But is a real problem.
And that was under affordable housing?
Mm-hmm.
Okay. Well, that's kind of the direction it sounds like that the, that committee is going to. So I will ask about that.
And then also too, especially in Troutdale, you look at things like C-FEC.
Yeah.
And when you look at something like a, a project coming in that's got eighty-six units with no parking.
Right.
I kind of feel personally like we're baking Christmas cookies down in Salem where we've got a big cookie cutter machine out there and we're just doing it like this. And when we don't have Macs, we don't have decent bus service, we don't have things. And I'm just And I'm just wondering who down there thinks this is a good idea?
Well, it's probably um. Some higher-ups in the legislative chain, I will tell you that I have opposed such things because it well. It sounds too much like what Portland wants to do, only now you're telling everybody else that they have to do it. If you have a community that can do it without parking, great, but it should not be something that's mandated because I'll tell you, as I think you all know. You can't make that work here. And you can't make it work in Gresham. In my work. And then I think it's questionable in my work in some areas of Portland, but. I I know I've seen that happening and so we do need to talk about the uh lack of. In fact, wasn't there an issue with the proposed development right here next to the Sheriff's Office?
Yes.
That was a parking issue, wasn't it?
It was a parking issue that's um that started approaching the microphone, it was a parking issue that we've uh since come to an agreement on.
Oh, good.
And approved the project, so.
So so hopefully there will be adequate parking.
We're hoping there, well. There's more parking than there was when the project was originally proposed and so we came we came to a compromise, exactly, exactly.
It it was a compromise.
Okay. And the reason I bring up Portland simply, not just to beat up on Portland. Oh, go ahead, you're in safe territory here. Oh, no, really, except it's televised and there's probably somebody from Portland with, you know, one of those dolls and. They're not your constituents, however, uh I've seen in some of the proposals like along the division border where they talk about not having any parking, that's just. Man, to me, that seems. It seems like we're trying to do it before the infrastructure is there. If we had a really, really good, robust transit system. Then maybe, but as we've all talked about and we know very well, out here, we don't.
Well, and when we we also look at the infrastructure piece, you know, right now we're having some real issues with response time.
Yes.
Um especially for fire and that can be attributed to a lot of things, but also too, we continue to do road diets.
Oh, yes.
And when we're we're having people die because somebody can't get there and then we're more worried about. The size of a sidewalk, I'm just scratching my head going. Who's making some of these decisions?
Well, eh you know, now where I've seen that is um it it's city of Portland likes to do a lot of road dieting, I don't know if it is the county doing.
County.
What's that?
The county for it's it's in conjunction with the county and Portland for most part, it's all generally, it's all down in Portland area.
Yeah, I mean, you drive down Gleason, for instance, and once you get to one six two. Then the road disappears and they've got all these weird parking things and. Signs that that's a little makes sense anyway, um but. The bias is, I grew up in the sixties and seventies and cars were not the enemy. And I think in some jurisdictions, cars are definitely the enemy and so we have to find a way again to compromise.
Yep, but the 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 source of the uh. Car being the enemy is LCDC's transportation planning room. There's just no two ways about it, if you read it, there's no way to say see that it doesn't say the car is the enemy. And basically, it is a nineteen seventies um.
Yeah.
View of big gas guzzling cars, it's not what cars are today.
Well, and and that's the thing, I mean, we see it with the arguments about the interstate bridge. Oh, well, you're just gonna waste all this fuel and you're gonna inspire all these people to drive, but you know, those cars are not the cars. That we had when I was a kid and they are not speeding out all of those emissions and the emissions are getting better and better, so you're right, I think it's a. It's somewhat based on on that old model of. Get high standing next to a car idling in a traffic light, every now and again, that still happens, by the way.
So before we keep going, Tanny, you're over and so. We're still in public comment, so we can continue a conversation, but since no one else is here, let me close public comment.
There you go.
And then we can continue. But yeah, please.
Um I just wanted to acknowledge uh another one of my colleagues, I see Dave Rippon over there in Zoom land, hello, David. How are you?
Great, good to see you and thanks for coming.
It's good to see you too.
I'm not gonna cross-examine you right now.
Okay, all right.
I'm just gonna congratulate.
I will say that uh David and I were we were on the council. Way back, I think that was oh three to the end of oh six for me and David, how long have you been here?
Oh, don't ask.
Don't. Okay, we'll strike that from the record. It's good to see you.
Oh, well, good to see you and I'm glad to uh find you're in and you look like you're in good shape.
Much better, yes, thank you.
Good for you, keep up the good work and you too, Zach.
Counselor White, yeah. Final, I wasn't gonna bring this up, but since it got brought up, the county showed us their plan for two fifty-seventh, which is putting it on a diet. And I I didn't know you were hung up at Wood Village because I was gonna give you this before the meeting, so I don't know if we could pass, I saved you my. Personal copy, so excuse the handwritten notes in the margin. But the, you know, that's a freight route and they wanna make it. They wanna make just one lane of freight lane and skinny the lane down by two feet. And and the only thing they're really gonna accomplish there is widening the bike lane and improving the sidewalk. Not using the right way, they're taking it away from the 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 freight route. Which I think is is dangerous and Gresham owns the the further south end and I don't think they're gonna do that to themselves.
But it connects up to twenty-six, I mean, it's a viable route from the end of twenty-six, well, the freeway end of twenty-six down to I eighty-four.
Now, there are some good things in there, you know, they're gonna have some speed monitoring signs, but if you would, please take a look at.
Yeah, definitely, definitely.
I know you're on the transport, you're the head, which the actual title?
Oh, uh we are a joint committee and I'm the co-chair with uh my house um colleague Susan McLean, so we're the joint and then. Senator Boquist is my co-chair and uh Representative Bossart Davis is Susan's co-chair, so the four of us.
Thank you, sorry to get off point.
No, 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 and I'm glad to hear about this, um I've been talking to city of Gresham about, you know, they've been talking about one eight first. And uh I had, but I hadn't heard anything about fifty-seven, so this is very helpful. You know, so much of the legislature is talking about eighty-second and and that's fine, but. We need to be talking about these other borders as well.
Yeah. Counselor Whitman.
As we're wrapping up here, I guess I just wanna make one comment that I'm really surprised today that with. Inflation and the way the economics of the country, the state. Monmouth County and everything we're in, that it really didn't come up today when you guys went through what hey, we were most proud of, what we went through, what really pushed. Really nothing economically stimulus for that you were champion or pushing for this last session. I hope when you come see us a year from now or after the next short session or whatever it is, you guys could come back and say. This is something we really wanted to push to help help that along.
Sure, that's a that's a great, uh that's a great point. We do have, I think it was H H B two thousand nine, which was um. Including several different pieces of legislative on economic incentives. Reestablishment improved states research and development tax credit for semiconductors. And um more work, I think it's gonna be done on that CHIPS Act.
And I was able to read that as well, but I mean, like I said, what you guys were most proud of.
Yeah, yeah, nope, good point.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Counselor White.
Say something.
Please do. This is his first meeting with his new nameplate, so.
This thing like this is.
That's nice.
It's pretty sweet, look how flashy it is, yeah, I use it, it was a piece of paper, so this is.
You've come up in the world.
I've come along with it, yeah. I wanted to just kind of touch on something that just kind of came to my mind is I homelessness, housing crisis is a big issue, you've talked about it, you've mentioned it multiple times. Newsman mentions it daily.
Oh, yes.
And then you kind of mentioned something about Senate Bill two thirty-eight with schools and and providing education on fentanyl and I just wanted to like. Ask kind of a follow-up question is that is that just is it specific to fentanyl or I think it's really important to, yes, identify fentanyl as an important. Um thing to discuss with kids, not only high school kids, middle school kids, but elementary school kids. But that 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 it's wide enough that it can we can grow on that, whichever comes next, because it's not gonna be just fentanyl, it's gonna be something else and. And to have those conversations, I think. It's important to not just limit it to fentanyl and maybe you just picked that because it's the hot button topic.
It really is about um broader drug and alcohol education.
Education in schools and man, like, is it is it mandating it mandatory or how does I don't know how that necessarily works.
Mandate that schools do this. I don't remember the amount, I'll have to go back and get back to you on that, but it isn't just fentanyl, you're right.
I think it's like it just it resonated because I think that that's something that can be important, I think when I grew up, like, I mean, it was dare, you know what I mean? So they come in and they they scare you from taking drugs and.
Right.
And uh I think we're at a different place now with, you know, measure one ten, like, we de-criminalized it and so. There's sometimes this aura out there that, you know, it's okay to go do drugs.
Right.
And um you know, we've even created safe spaces for people to do drugs, uh there was a really sweet um. Article that came out that they were gonna, you know, handy out foil packets to go smoke their fentanyl on a clean thing and. I, you know, uh I think when we when you step back, measure one ten, one ten was like this, it was a good. The initial idea and thought behind it was was a good idea, you know, but poorly severely poorly executed.
I agree.
And it just kind of rolls into this homelessness and I think that you start at the source, which is. Kids and their education and them growing and and learning and being provided proper education, you can. In a sense, you know, limit their ability to to go into homelessness, um houselessness, however you wanna say it, but. Um I think that's important to think of that cycle, not just like, hey, we're just gonna throw money, because I feel like right now we're just trying to throw money. At this and there's very little accountability and the money is just this, it's just kind of to me swirling down and there's not a lot of. There's not a lot of substance to be proud of, to show like, look at what we've done with these hundreds of millions of dollars. And so if we can, you know, I think if we can cut it off at the source, limit that going forward, I know it's a redoing the whole system kind of. Statement that I'm making, but I just wanted to like kind of say, just kind of what my thoughts on.
Sure.
On on that and how it can roll through and maybe help move the process along, because.
Well, I think you're you're absolutely right and I think what we've seen and the criticism are rightfully so of the county. Is that we haven't had that account for what for what did we get for all of this, what will we get as we continue? And um I know a number of our Republican colleagues have also said, is there, why don't we have in a. Some sort of accounting so we can say, oh, we did this much, it costs us this much and this was what we this is what we got out of it. I wanna see that, but unfortunately. We haven't seen it and we have to keep pushing, um I think that, you know, when you're talking about money that's gonna be ongoing, like the metro. Uh money going into the being transferred to the county, we have to ask those hard questions of. What does this money go to and is it effective? Because you know what you have to do if it's not effective? Find something that is, you can't just keep funneling it after, you know, whatever it is so that you can claim you made a difference, we wanna really be able to say, look, this is what we did. And uh that I think is the piece that we're we're kind of lacking right now.
I think this is just a really good start, like, and I just wanted to kind of like something for you to like kind of think about and that these 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 things can really help.
Oh, I think you're right.
Mitigate that in the future, so.
And anytime you all think of things that are like, hey, why aren't we doing this? Please do reach out to us, we do not have a market corner, actually. Uh but we uh we need we need fresh, good ideas and if you've got something, please tell us. And uh whether it's about, you know, drugs or measure one ten or um homelessness, whatever, because you all see it. The most of those in terms of all of the different layers of government. Aside from, you know, police and fire and medical, you're you're the closest to it.
Yeah, agreed. All right, if there's no other comments or questions for the Senator and Representative. We appreciate your time, Zach, it's good to see you, thank you for again for always being accessible, it's very important, um and Senator. I'm glad you're uh here to give us this report and I'm glad you're uh like like Rippon said, you look great, so.
I appreciate that.
Yeah.
And thanks for having us, we're we're always excited to come out and meet other parts and stuff.
Yeah. All right.
Colleagues, maybe, is you all against it?
All the way from Gresham.
I know, I know, I mean, I had to drive down two twenty-third to get here, come on. Oh, and then I had to go down and ride a road because the McMenamins backed up.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
Party?
Yeah.
Party.
You know, though, I do like those uh you can have a little something in the theater.
Oh, yeah.
A little Frank Bassler.
Yep, it's our jewel of Troutdale.
There it is.
Thank you, gentlemen, appreciate it very much.
Thank you.
All right, let's get back on the schedule, let's go to agenda item number seven, a discussion of recycling and solid waste ordinance structure and. Implementation of administrative rules, Ryan Leguero, environmental specialist for the city of Troutdale, thank you for your patience.
Thank you, Mayor, thank you, City Council, uh I have about forty slides, so I I I'm not gonna be short like Dakota, I have plenty to keep us going tonight. Uh transfer over to my screen. So yes, discussion of solid waste ordinance structure and administrative rules, so what am I talking about? Uh ordinance structure, I'm proposing to move chapter five zero eight. Business recycling program and chapter eight point four zero, the solid waste program where it currently resides. Uh and move them both under to Title twelve for public works, since we're treating this as a utility, I'd like to consolidate some of the ordinances that are currently. Like I said, scattered through the code currently and and put them under the home where it's currently being managed, which is under public works as a utility. That's part one, the other part is a little more expansive, it's looking at administrative rules in solid waste and recycling. And why why would I wanna do that? Well, here's some reasons, one is it transfers the authority to city staff for easier promulgation of rules. Uh it's a little more efficient rather than coming before council. It lessens the burden on city council to review ordinances that may have technical aspects and as you. May may know that some of my presentations get into jargon possibly and and things that. Aren't really making sense and so I'd like to lessen your burden on trying to understand some of these things and uh and leave them in as administrative rules. Kind of like the the old cliche of there's the house and the foundation and that's where the ordinance is and it has its framing, but. You know, leave the wiring and plumbing maybe to someone else who has a little more expertise on that. Uh and also the efficiency, increasing the efficiency because staff. Myself or others would not have to write staff reports, draft ordinances, et cetera, we would not need to coordinate with a minimum of two city council meetings for any ordinance. Passing and we wouldn't have, you know, mandated rule changes that sometimes come from metro can be implemented sooner without relying on a city city council calendar. So what am I talking about? What are some examples? One example is the business food waste requirements. That are currently out of sync in their timeline, when Metro passed that and and required us to adopt that ordinance, uh you know, they have this. Timeframe set up, well, then we had a pandemic and that threw that whole timeframe out of of whack, so the way we had adopted the code, we actually put in dates, maybe in hindsight. We wouldn't put dates in, we would just make some language that says whatever Metro says on the timeframe of adoption, but nonetheless, it's there. It's out of sync with the with the current timeline that Metro has since updated, that'd be a perfect example of something if it's an administrative rules. We could easily uh change that and adopt that without having to come before council for two meetings to announce, uh you know, to adopt new ordinance for that language. Another uh example is, let's say if we wanted to change the applicability of covered businesses, there's a list of businesses that are covered under that. Uh ordinance, but what, let's say Metro decides we don't want some of these businesses covered anymore, we wanna change it. Well, something as simple as that, we wouldn't have to come again before council for two meetings to, you know, adopt something such as. for two meetings to, you know, adopt something such as that language. So it leaves some of the more technical aspects out of the ordinance language. We would still have ordinance that would, you know, like I said, kind of give the framework of what we're trying to get at. But really, the details would be left to something under administrative rules. What are potential applications? Well, there's a couple coming up in the near future. One is our franchise agreement, which needs to be renewed before the end of this current year, calendar year. And service standards, it's been adopted, city of Beaverton, Washington County, they've, they've put their, their service standards under their administrative rules and outside of the franchise agreement. And we could do something very similar. And that would be useful because we have something that's called the Plastic Pollution and Recycling Modernization Act. And we're not quite sure where that's going to go with what it's going to be requiring in, in potential that impacts of our franchise agreement. So if we had it under administrative rules, it could be easily updated rather than, like I said, spending time writing this draft of staff reports, ordinances and whatnot, and having to update those things if they were in an ordinance. Metro Regional, sorry, did someone say something? Okay. Metro Regional Service Standards for Multi-Family Units. Metro currently has these standards and are wanting cities to adopt this. This would be another prime example of something that would be useful to have as a service standard. Reduce Rate Program for Low Income and/or Elderly Residents. This is a program that's been recently adopted again in Beaverton, Washington County, something that we could adopt potentially in our city, but we could use the rules as administrative rules and not have it all in ordinance. What are some non-solid waste examples? Well, we, we did this recently with our local limits. We, we have them referenced in our ordinance. However, the actual review and implementation of these local limits, it's in an admin rule. We changed that recently. A more historical example was the telecom franchise agreements that were moved to a right-of-way ordinance once that ruling came. So we kind of had two options or two discussion points, I should say. We could continue with the status quo, which I'm fine to do. And I will continue to introduce ordinances to update or implement new rules and bring them before city council. Or we could use more administrative rules. And so I would introduce an ordinance that basically would grant authority to either the city manager or his designee for promulgation of rules to, like I said, kind of flesh out more of the details of the ordinance, leaving the ordinance there, but having more of the details transferred over into an administrative rule. So it doesn't have a long list of items, and I'll just give you a quick glance. Something like this that we currently have for the business, or I should say, business food waste requirements, where you have a lot of code that maybe doesn't all need to be there. And with that, let me switch back.
Oh, we actually never even saw your screen.
None of them?
No. I didn't know we were supposed to.
You just, you don't see it now either?
No, uh-uh.
That's great.
Until you said, I'll give you a glance and I'll switch back, and then I realized, oh, crap.
That's, that's why I should have had Sarah or Kenda have these ahead of time so they could have uploaded it.
I'm sorry.
No, that's right. I, I basically covered the point, so you heard me.
Can you, is there, so it doesn't, your screen sharing doesn't work at all?
Apparently it's not wanting to, I thought it was. Let's see, does that work?
Nope.
No. Yeah. Well, I'm not sure, Mayor.
There it goes.
Now, now you see it?
Now I see it.
Oh, that's great.
See what you did. Now I see what you did. You only had one screen prepared and you played it off like you didn't.
Yeah, I wrote them real quick. Yeah, so here's my, my slide.
See that last slide, if you wouldn't mind, the last one.
The example of the current code?
Yes.
Okay. You see this?
I see the two options, continuous status quo or using.
Boy, I am not sure how this works with. Now you see me, I assume?
And we see this, yep, correct.
Let me try it again. How's that?
There you go, that's what I'm talking about.
Okay. So this is, yeah, so like I said, this is the food waste requirements. So, you know, there's a list of, as my example said, applicability of, let's say, businesses covered under this rule. And, you know, for one thing, it would just kind of reduce some of this language. And, and, and like I mentioned, there's, there's the business recycling requirement that we have for solid waste. We have just some other, I think, you know, ordinances that we can maybe slim down a little bit and move some of that language over to an administrative rule so that could be easily updated. And like I mentioned, you know, it's, it's something as simple as, you know, dates of when the program for each business group for the food waste was supposed to come online. And these dates are currently out of sync with what Metro has, you know, updated the code to their code, which therefore affects our code. So that was, that was my example.
That helps. And so one of the reasons why I wanted to see that is my question, what, what percentage of these changes or these ordinances that you would normally be tasked to bring in front of us, what percentage of that is driven by Metro ordinance changes or Metro code changes that are implemented into us in our jurisdiction?
Yeah, so for solid waste, I would say, you know, obviously the food waste, the business recycling, those are the two main ones as of late. I come bef, I've come before you for, you know, rate review, of course. The franchise agreement's another one that's outside of Metro. So I would say those were the only two specifically as of the last few years that I've come before city council due to Metro's requirements. But like I said, there's the multi-family regional service standards. That's something that they're wanting cities to adopt. So that'd be a new one that would come before you. And then, you know, like I said, the, the RMA, the Recycling Modernization Act, we're still not sure, because that's, that, you know, rules have not been finalized on the state level. But I'm not sure how those are going to affect us in the metro region or statewide, really. So that, you know, I'm not sure how that'll affect me.
Okay. Comments or questions from council? Counselor, counselor, let's go with Counselor Ripma, because this is the first we'll hear from on the topic. Counselor Ripma?
All right, I, I appreciate the interest in streamlining, but I, I have not felt overburdened with having to look at business recycling or the solid waste program. These franchise agreements don't seem to come up that much, at, at least not in a burdensome way for council. And I sort of like to keep track of what Metro's up to. And I think our businesses let us know if there's something weird coming down the line. Anyway, my inclination is to say, we appreciate, I appreciate the offer to consolidate this and make it more administrative and not bring things to council. But I'm, I'm not a fan. I, at least not yet. I haven't, I understand about streamlining things, but these are not issues that come up all the time. And they're things I like to keep track of as a counselor. So that's my feeling. You wanted our feedback and that's mine. Leave it alone.
Thank you, Counselor Ripma. Counselor White?
Yeah, thanks for the presentation. I appreciate, anytime staff tries to simplify and streamline or, but most of those topics you mentioned were, were some of our more controversial meetings that we have. And, you know, this is the same Metro that just hijacked our community enhancement fund, for example. I'm still pretty upset over that one, but I just think that without that, there's, there's no oversight. It will just be happening. Who knows what could come of that? So I, I'd continue with status quo.
So maybe, maybe I haven't quite clarified, maybe quite enough, is that these issues, we would probably still need to adopt some sort of language, some sort of structure as an ordinance, let's say, initially. My, my kind of argument for it is that then we can, I can able to get at some of the tweaks, not major wholesale changes, but more of the technical issues that may come up to adjust on the fly that, like I said, a simple thing as a date, a simple thing as maybe a covered business, which they have not changed that, that was just me giving an example. But I, so that was my kind of angle, is not that you'll still have to come and, and weigh in on the initial ordinance of, let's say, the business food waste requirement or business recycling or other ordinances. It's mainly after the fact, saving time and streamlining maybe some of the language in the code on my part, so I don't have to come in before you for something so minor. So you'd still be made aware, I think, of these issues. It's just like I said, it's the after, after they're initially adopted as an ordinance, the maintenance, let's say, of that ordinance as an administrative rule could be a little more simplified, I think, or would be simplified as an administrative rule.
So Counselor Lance?
Are those things that could be handled in the consent agenda?
Well, not if they're going to be in ordinance, no, I don't think so. That's got to be a vote on, you know, two meetings.
Any other comments or questions, positions, stances? Counselor Whitaker?
Does anybody have any issue with bullet point number one of just consolidating them both into a single chapter?
I don't necessarily have an issue with any of it, but I can, I can understand and appreciate Counselor Ripma and Counselor White's argument.
I would like to see what the administrative rules really look like.
Yeah, so, and, and, you know, I, I don't have any examples of, of what the code or what an administrative rule would look like based off of our ordinances currently. I think, though, they would be more technical in nature, honestly. And, and something, as I kind of pointed out, in terms of the dates and/or lists of covered businesses for the food waste would be covered under that. For our franchise agreement, it would be service standards, let's say. So, you know, what materials are going to be collected at the curb are we going to require? Things of that nature in our franchise agreement that other cities have moved over to an administrative rule, but kept the basic agreement in place so that, you know, there are certain things in that agreement that waste management would want to weigh in on. But other items, we would want to be able to have that ability to update as needed.
Mr. Ray Young?
From what I'm hearing, I think we should submit an ordinance to council that consolidates the two sections. It's free to consider for a person that could hearing. And then let me have Ryan work on what would an ordinance look like that might allow some flexibility for staff to make technical, unsubstantial but important changes? And, and, and just, you can actually see what Ryan wants to do and accept or reject or modify. So maybe we should bring two separate, so we don't combine the two together, because the combining is probably fairly simple. But the other one, you kind of want to see what would it look like if you did it? But I definitely appreciate Counselor Ripma's idea that we don't see him, see him that often and it's not that big a deal if we have to make two hearings to do it. So we appreciate that. But we'll see if there's some things we can keep off the council's agenda that are minor, that are not impactful. How's that for suggestion, Counselor?
Counselor Ripma, and then I'll go Counselor Lance.
Well, all right, the purpose of this agenda item was to discuss the pros and cons of doing this. And staff is, has made a pitch to do it. I, I can't see, though, having staff go ahead and do it and then present an ordinance, which we then vote up or down, they've already spent their time. My, my feeling and my position is staff could be making better use of their time and not, not come up with an ordinance combined. I don't see an advantage in combining business waste with recycling, with solid waste into one ordinance. I just can't see an advantage to the city or to my constituents. And my, my preference would be to just leave it alone. Staff came to us for a discussion. I can't tell where the rest of the council is exactly, but my thought is, next time something comes up where you have to come to us for an ordinance and you say, here's an example of why this could be done administratively, then I might understand it. But right now, it's all pretty abstract. I don't recall this being, these being burdensome taxes on our time at council. And so I, I'd prefer to just give it a pass.
Counselor Lance?
I'm going to have to agree with Counselor Ripma on that. And one of the things where you just said, you said they're unsubstantial and important. And that, to me, is a dichotomy that doesn't add up. If it's important, it's not unsubstantial, so. And I like Metro in general, but I don't trust Metro. So I like to see what it is they're doing and any fine print, I think having extra eyes on it helps. It would just make me feel more comfortable.
Okay. Counselor Wong, what do you think?
I don't, I don't, I don't want to say I don't care, but I, I, I don't necessarily have feelings, but I, I hear what Counselor Ripma has to say and it makes, that makes a lot of sense to me and what Counselor Lance has to say, I kind of agree with the both of you, so.
Well, I can do math.
That's Dave's line.
Yeah. So Ryan, I appreciate your agenda item and I, I can appreciate where you're coming from and the idea of streamlining, you know, and, and taking some burdensome time that staff thinks that we have or that you have for preparing these items. Maybe we just take it and say, again, thank you. And like Counselor Ripma said, next time something like this comes up, bring it up there in the moment and say, this is one of those times. This is a really great example of time that you all are spending here now, going over something that could have been an easy administrative change to update a date and a code or adding this business or taking this business out, so. Did I cover that enough?
So I, so I'm hearing that I should have scratched that and said, not burdensome on city council's time, but on my time. Should have, should have edited that better.
Yeah, I would probably, yeah, yes. But again, we appreciate it and thanks for always looking for ways to help out.
So we're going to leave, let's say, the business food waste and the, of, of business recycling separate in a different title and, and leave the solid waste title where it's at, under health and safety? Is that also what I'm hearing?
It sounds like that's the way we're going, yes.
Okay.
That's the way we are suggesting staff considers, or staff continues to go.
Okay.
Before, Counselor Whitaker? Oh, I thought you had your hand up, okay. All right. I think we're good with this.
Thank you all for your feedback, I appreciate it.
Thank you, sir, appreciate what you do.
You'll see me soon.
All right. Thank you, everybody, for the discussion. Let's move on to Agenda Item Number Eight, Staff Communications. Mr. Ray Young?
Thank you, Mayor.
Land this plane.
Yes, number one, you made notes around town, we've been doing a lot of slurry sealing on the roads. I think we just want to publicly apologize to the citizens because it has not gone as well as planned. The weather did not cooperate the first week we had it before school. And the subcontractor has not been as responsive to our requests on how they conduct their work that we would have liked, so it's a learning experience for us. But I think we should be close to being done. I don't know, Mr. Holman, he's still on the call or he's still listing, I don't know how much more we have to do left. We should be about done, but I'm just, sorry, people were inconvenienced if Dave's got moved around. We tried to put it together, but we can't control the weather, so. That one. And number two, Parks Advisor Committee is meeting next Wednesday night and they're going for round number twenty-seven on dogs and parks. If you'd like to listen in next Wednesday night, listen in, because it's bound to come to here. But as usual, please don't make any comments since you do carry weight with our city committees. But if you want to listen in, go ahead next Wednesday. And finally, Mr. Trumpke added something on the fly at the end. He wanted you to review this memo that he put together, so I will turn it over to Mr. Trumpke. And any additional time used in this meeting is on him, not me, Mr. Mayor.
You freaked me out when I sat down and saw this. I thought we got a complaint.
Ah, no.
Okay, good.
I, I don't know why the legislature decided it was so important to adopt.
I, I don't know why the legislature decided it was so important to adopt this legislation, but they did. They defined or tried to define what is a serial meeting, which ends up being a communication that is part of a decision-making process in which more than a quorum or a quorum or more of the, your public body takes part over some period of time. And it doesn't say what that period of time is. It could be very, very long. So if you, if one council member speaks to the mayor, that council member speaks to two other council members, that is four people. While you will only spoken to one, and he will have only spoken to three, we would have gotten a quorum. Or actually, if it were, if you spoke to two people and, and each of them spoke to two people, we are way over a quorum. And if that, if the subject matter falls within what is a deliberation, which means a discussion or communication that's part of the decision-making process. It excludes purely factual matters, but it's kind of hard to talk about facts without some kind of inflection in your voice that may deliver some kind of a message that may be part of the deliberative process. So it also requires training once every five years or once during every term, term of office that you have. So you will be getting, LOC has, has training sessions for it. There are, there are plenty to do, plenty to take. The council can ratify actions that it has taken that may have been in violation of the public meetings laws and make them valid, but that doesn't undo the, the, the first problem. And the Oregon Government Ethics Commission can come after you and, and it specifies now that any fines imposed are yours personally, can't be paid by a public body or, or those sorts of folks. It, it seems to me that it's very broad, what the definitions are, and there's no clear answer as to whether an inadvertent action which takes place that could snare four or five council members is any different than one that's intentionally wrong. It, it's really not clear from this that any kind of intent to violate the law is required. That also troubles me some. And just gonna have to be very, very careful. And not, if you do disclose something factually to the whole council, then nobody ought to reply all, because it, it could end up with a big problem. So I just wanted to tell everybody to be careful.
I think that's the number one piece of advice coming from LOC. Don't reply all. I think they could sum up the majority of their serial meeting training by welcome, don't reply all. Have a good lunch.
But, 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 but the problem here is, is that intermediaries, if you speak to a neighborhood volunteer who then speaks to every other council member and says, well, you know, the mayor thinks this, and I, I agree or I disagree, that could be a serial meeting.
Right. Or we heard discussion in Mayor's Association of, what's that app? Nextdoor?
Yes.
Nextdoor, you going on as the mayor or city councillor in stating a position. Other city councillors are also on that app and state their position. That could also be considered. Well, no, not also, but that was one of the discussions was, is that considered an intermediary? And the answer was, it doesn't specifically, that's what the answer was, probably.
So I, I don't think this does a lot of good to encourage elected officials to speak to their electorate. It really could get you into trouble if they go out and talk to other council members. So it's counterproductive in some ways. And I would hope that it gets clarified to make, make it require some kind of evil intent.
Yeah, I think, and not to belabor it anymore, but Sandy, I'll get you in just a second. It was one of the things that I was most surprised about when I first took my chair as a city councillor was how much you actually aren't allowed to talk. And, but in essence, I understand why. It, the discussion needs to be here. It needs to be in front of the public. It needs to be transparent, not in the backyard of someone drinking beers and joking about what shouldn't happen or what could happen. So I get it, and I absolutely appreciate it. But at the same time, it was just a big surprise how much we actually aren't allowed to, how much our speech is limited because of the, the positions that we hold. Counselor Lance?
Intermediary when we do our one-on-ones?
I didn't hear the question.
Intermediary when we do our one-on-ones? Yeah, I mean, that, that does fall into that. With one-on-ones with Ray.
Yeah, well, conceivably is a, the, the lame county case that first defined or first determined that serial meetings can exist, but that was overturned by the State Supreme Court on technical reasons. That was one between two county commissioners and the county administrator. So yes, those will count.
Except for as long as I don't tell them what another council member is saying, then there's really not the issue.
Right.
Correct.
Well, and that, that, and that's the difference, right? That county was probably a, a commission of three.
Right.
And so when that county administrator speaks to two and informs the other one that they spoke to the other one, therein lies the serial meeting. So if Ray has his meetings with us, and I'll speak with, for me, when I speak with Ray, Ray doesn't tell me what Counselor Lance, Counselor Rittman, Counselor One, Counselor Witcher, or Counselor White, or Caswell feel, speak, or have the opinions he's been offered by them. So he's, in my opinion, when he speaks to me, he's very good at not violating serial meeting laws because of that. It's constantly conversations based on my point of view, his point of view, and so on.
And
Same with, same with Ed.
And respect that with him because the last little paragraph here is appointed officials, officials of a city may be found ineligible for continued office if the O G E C finds willful misconduct or intentional disregard of the law by him or me or city recorder or any other person and lose your, you know, allegedly, they'd lose their job. It's, it's not that clear. There are a lot of complexities with that, but that's what the intention is. And, and I wouldn't want to be the person to litigate it.
No. Counselor Lance?
One more question. A lot of the outside groups that I work with and things I do, I try to always copy Ray and Randy on. Is that still okay?
Yeah. Well, I would say probably, because you're then relying on me not to email everybody else. I, for one, appreciate it. And we wouldn't, again, it's just you understanding that I understand not to conduct that business with other council members or with other staff members that would then conduct it with other council members. Now, if you see, if you CC Council President Rittman, myself, Counselor White, then there would be the problem, right? That's, that's considered a form. Or if Ray CC'd an email that you CC'd Counselor Rittman and Counselor White to me and had the three of you in CC or forwarded, then therein lies a problem, if that makes sense. So.
So just be careful.
And I'm not a lawyer, but I did stay. Yeah, I played one on TV once. Don't reply all and be careful. All right. Thanks, sir. Anything else, Ray?
Nope, that was it.
All right, council communications. Counselor White?
I was gonna have a comment.
Oh, no, go ahead.
This, before I do anything else, but it seems like freedom of speech is under attack, and I kind of see this as another form of that. I think we do our best work out in the public and making businesses aware of things that might be coming their way. And now we're, we're liable if they tell other people. That, that doesn't make any sense to me. And I don't know how anyone would enforce that, but I'm pretty upset after reading this, but I go, well, we had public comment tonight about the parking situation for First Fridays. Is there anything else we, we can do for those folks?
Well, it's, again, it's a good problem to have, because First Fridays are becoming very, very popular. The area that they're talking about is public right of way. And unless the city wants to engage in what City of Portland does, which is local residents have permits to only park certain places, that would be a, a change in how we do things. That's not something that council has to decide if they want to do that. It should permits to downtown residents for already parking. And then we'd have to designate which areas you need a permit to park in. And then we'd have to enforce that, which takes manpower. So we only do First Fridays four, five days a year. So it's not a regular problem. So.
And it's over. And it's over.
And it's over for now, for, you know, eight more months. So that's my initial, just off the cuff response.
I think there's 10 units at that apartment complex, and there's, there is no parking, but it's an older complex. It was.
And by the way, on that issue, Ms. Jones, she's gonna check on that garbage issue. I don't think there's any asbestos in that stuff. That old city hall didn't have asbestos in it. So, but it shouldn't be stored back there for long anyway.
Thank you. Okay. All right, Counselor Witcher?
Yeah. Kenny had brought up about the Public Safety Working Group, right? Getting that extended, is that possible to get that on the 26th?
Yes, I was planning on reporting to council, but the reason you're not getting a report from the working group is because we'll have to wait till September 26th to hear that.
Okay, but then can we get it on council for 26th to have the sunset extended?
Yes.
So we have an option to at least get that voted on?
Yeah, I was planning on doing an update on the 26th.
Okay. And then I'm in California, the 26th and 27th, so I will not be here for council or the Public Safety Working Group.
Okay. Sounds good. All right, Counselor Lance?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna bring up too, was 2578. So thanks. That was it.
Counselor Rittman?
Yeah, I, I was interested in that, that topic too. But I just wanted to say that I went to, I think, all the First Fridays this summer. And they were really a great success, I thought. Sorry, some people have trouble finding a parking place, but it, it, they were well attended. People seemed to be enjoying themselves. The businesses seemed to be doing great. And the couple of concerts at the Troutville Historical Society put on down at the Harlow House Barn were also well attended and great fun and well, and, and well loved. So anyway, congratulations to the city staff that worked on that and, and everybody who participated. That's all.
Counselor One? Nothing. I would say school's back in session, so be careful driving around the schools. That's all I got.
Motion to adjourn.
Man, seconded by Kim's Witcher. Yeah, that's a break in tradition. Holy cow. All in favor? Aye. All opposed? All right, thank you, everybody. Have a good night. Don't say anything back yet.
There's four people here. There's no serial meeting. I'll put it on tape.